Meeting of the Select Board to the Town of Millis. With me tonight is Erin Underhill, the Vice Chair, and is Craig here? I didn't see him.
Yes.
And Craig Schultz, the Clerk from the Select Board. Also, we have Mike Gazinski, Town Administrator, and Karen DiMarzo, our Operations Manager. I think that's correct. We're going to start this evening with some announcements. So I think we have a few from DPW and others, and I'll hand this over to Mr. Gazinski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've, our DPW Director, Mr. McKay, wanted to give just a few brief updates to the Board on things going on within that department. And then I believe Karen was going to talk a little bit about the Norfolk County Sheriff's Department Community Service Program.
Thank you, Mr. Gazinski. Thank you, Mr. Chair and Board. I just wanted to update the Board on some out pending projects with the Board and what the citizens that are watching on TV know. I think first, the Senior Assisted Living Project, it's underway, that's at the corner of Dover Road and Bridge Street. I think many people would see the two elevator shafts of three are going up in the air and the foundations are put in place. So I think that's going to be an active site throughout the winter with hopefully with the building being built. We actually have a preconstruction meeting this tomorrow at 2:00. We're going to try to let the workers work out in the roadway to finalize the connections of the water in the sewer mains that's still out there so we can get that road paved in early spring. So the preconstruction meeting will consist of myself and all the standard people, the Building Commissioner, the Police Fire, school bus drivers, so on and so on. Everybody will be in attendance, so we'll be able to keep everybody updated. And we can update the Board once we hear more on that after tomorrow. I can email everybody. Second is the paving of Spring Street. I think everyone knows that that's underway. It is scheduled to be paved this Saturday, pending the weather. It doesn't look too promising. It does look like we're going to get a lot of rain this Saturday. So the reason why we're pushing it off to a paving on a Saturday is because that there's just so much time that we can let the work start and we have to close it for the entrance and exits of all the school buses and traffic, people picking up. If it doesn't work out this Saturday, we may look at, and again, I'll consult with the Police Chief, Fire Chief, and the Town Administrator and the Superintendent. We may have to do it during the week. We are running out of time. The weather is getting a little cold. You can still pave up till it's at least, you know, 40-plus degrees, but we are running out of time. The reason for that delay and such a long time was we worked with the owners of Tangerini Farms. They requested that we delay the paving of it so they could install a gas main going into their property. And that was taken care of. And again, I think as I stated to you, I'd like to thank the gas company for getting that done so quickly. While we're still talking about pavement, I think many people will see that at the DPW garage, there may be some interference. We are putting the binder coat down on that parking lot, so there could be some disruption going to the transfer station either this Wednesday or the following Wednesday. And lastly, the water tank is part of our water tank improvement program that was granted, I think it was last year. The Wallard Street Tank has been taken offline, and in that, we emptied it all last week, and we will put a new circulator in there, which is great. That's good for water quality. So what that means is there's going to be a fan in there that will turn the water over 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And I think that's it for us right now, and I think Karen's going to talk about what a great job.
Yes.
I didn't want to say prisoners. That didn't sound right.
So Jim is right. We've recently had the Norfolk County Sheriff's Department Community Service Program here doing volunteer work for us. The only charge to the town is that we purchase lunch for them, and we have basically free labor. They have been fantastic. They've come for several years and have worked in many different places. This year, they started with the Oak Grove Farm. They worked with Steve McGinnis, who is the Oak Grove Farm Chair, and did a lot of cleanup around the playground and areas, and other areas. They also went over to 64 Exchange Street, which is the Lansing-Millis Memorial Building. They did a lot of cleanup around there. They did some painting, so take a look. It looks a heck of a lot better. They did work at the library on the interior, moving things around for our Library Director, and then they did a lot of work over at the cemetery as well, helping with cleanup. So it's just been great. We have extra hands. The work has been unbelievable, and we've been thrilled to have them. And again, like I said, we had them two and a half weeks. We will likely use them again in the near future, and they may even do some painting inside here at Town Hall for us. So I just want to say thank you again. It's a wonderful program, and we certainly are reaping the benefits.
Well, thank you very much. And I can say, from what I've seen, they've done a superb job. And thank you, Jim, for the work you're doing on the various projects of town. They're much appreciated. Okay, I think we're into our open session hearings and hearings, and I guess we'll start with the appointment of a snowplow driver contractor. So Mr. McKay, I'll ask you to talk with us about that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is the fourth year that we've been hiring past employees that worked for the DPW. And this year, Alex McCall, Kenneth McCall, has been with us since the inception of this program, and I would actually like to ask if Mark Robbins, Mark has worked with the, up at the transfer station for a couple of summers and has worked out very well, both of them, worked very well with our employees. What this means is we will call them in, use the town equipment. They will use a town plow truck, and we'll be getting some much higher savings than what it would be if we had to hire a contractor. And I believe that's the Town Administrator's appointment. Both of them will both need a physical and a drug screening, because even though they won't drive a CDL heavy-duty truck, but it's still, they're driving a vehicle, so they will definitely need a drug test and physical.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as the Director said, I think these two individuals are well-suited to step into this role, and I am requesting that the Board vote to ratify my appointment of Kenneth Alec McCall and Mark Robbins as snowplow drivers for what's contracted for the town.
Okay, well, first I'll ask if there are any questions or concerns from the Board. I will comment that it's tough to get good snowplow drivers right now, so I think we're very fortunate that these two individuals are willing to step up. Given that, I'll take a motion.
I move that we ratify the Town Administrator's appointment of Kenneth Alec McCall and Mark Robbins as seasonal snowplow contractors, both pending a physical and drug screening tests.
Second. So moved and seconded to ratify the appointment of Kenneth Alec McCall and Mark Robbins as seasonal snowplow contractors for the Town of Millis, pending physical. And I guess, do they have to do Corey or not?
Yes, sir. Yes, I forgot that to him. Yes, you're right.
That's, just asking. Thank you. I'll poll the Board. Mr. Jermaine, yes. Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
And Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Great to have them on board, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. I think our next one is the appointment of a Cultural Council member. And in that case, excuse me, well, I have to scroll through to find all these. We're looking at Megan Quilop, I think. Is that correct?
Kilop.
Kilop?
Kilop.
Kilop. Okay, I apologize. And I think it's terrific that we have people like Megan who are willing to work with us. I will ask the Board members if they have any comments or questions with respect to Megan.
I have a comment. I think she is absolutely perfect for this type of committee. She is brilliantly artistic, and I think she will do a great job for us here.
Great. Any other comments from anyone?
I do not know her, but I'll take Karen's word for it.
Nor do I know her, but I looked at qualifications. I think it's great, and it's very important that we have people willing to work with the town on committees such as this. So I'll take a nomination for her for this Board?
I move that we appoint Megan Kilop to the Millis Cultural Council.
Second. So moved and seconded to appoint Megan Kilop to the Millis Cultural Council. I'll poll the Board. Mr. Jermaine, yes. Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
And Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Motion unanimous. Welcome aboard Megan. Is Megan with us this evening?
She is. She is.
Megan?
Yes.
Do you have anything you would like to say?
No, just excited to be a part of it.
Well, thank you very much for willingness to volunteer. I hope you find it an enjoyable experience. I know we'll benefit as a town.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on, we have a hearing of the fiscal year 22 rate tax rate classification. So I'm going to ask Ms. Teresa Goncalves to talk with us about that, please. Is Teresa not here?
She's muted right now.
Okay.
So can you unmute her, Karen?
I can ask her to, but I can't. She has to do it, unfortunately.
I can speak on her behalf, if you'd like.
Yes.
Can you pack it? You'll see a memo for the Select Board. So on behalf of the Board of Assessors, the Tax Classification Hearing to be held on Monday, October 25th, 2021, is for the Select Board to adopt either a single tax rate or a split tax rate. I see that Terry is unmuted, and I'll let her take it from there.
The Board of Assessors met on October 21st, and they would recommend that the Town of Millis stay with a single tax rate. Our current commercial industrial base is less than 10%. It's actually 8.1479% of our total tax base. Millis has had a single rate, and at this point, we do not see a reason to change that to a split rate. So we are asking the Board to continue with that single rate.
That's fine. And what would a split rate be, just for the audience?
You would have, the Board would vote to either split it anywhere from 99 to 1.50% split, meaning that the higher the split, the lower the tax rate would be for the residential taxpayer, but higher for the commercial industrial taxpayer.
Okay. And would you mind explaining why you're choosing not to go in that direction?
See, because our commercial industrial tax base is so low, the commercial industrial base would be carrying a very high percentage if we did split the rate. Our commercial industrial base is less than 10% of our entire base, our entire tax base. And when it's that low, very seldom do you see a split rate on anything less than 10%. More often, it's 15-plus percent before you see a split rate.
Thank you. I open it to questions and comments from the Board. Hearing done. Are there any from the rest of the community? In which case, I will ask that we have a motion to accept the tax rate as a single tax rate as proposed.
Oops, sorry. You just have to close the hearing first, Pete.
Oh, I'm sorry. I hereby will ask the members, poll the members to close the hearing. Mr. Jermaine, yes. Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
And Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Okay, hearing's closed. I apologize for that. Now, I will ask for a motion if there are no other comments. Hearing none. I look for a motion.
I make a motion that the Town approve a single tax rate for fiscal levy year 2022.
Second.
So moved and seconded for a single tax rate for the levy for the fiscal year 2022. I'll poll the Board. Mr. Jermaine, yes. Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
And so moved unanimously. Thank you both very much.
Just one question. Now that we've set that piece, when will we have an actual rate set?
The tax rate will be set after Town meeting and we complete the tax recap and some various other forms for the Department of Regno.
Thank you very much. Just curious about that piece of it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Kipir? Ms. Carol?
Yes.
I'd just like to take a couple of minutes and thank the Board for appointing Diane Jermaine as a Board of Assessor. She quickly ramped up and took the required training that was needed and became certified to set values. Without her doing that, we would not be able to have the hearing tonight, so we would be delayed in trying to set a tax rate. So I really appreciate the Board doing that, and I appreciate Mrs. Jermaine for taking on the responsibility.
I have no further comments on that. If any of you choose to make.
I recall you were the only one that didn't vote for her. And that's why you abstained.
Thank you, Diane, for stepping up.
Yeah.
Thank you, Carol. You're embarrassing me, but thank you.
Okay, thank you all very much. I think our next order of business is approval of the repres ding map. So for that, I'm going to call on Lisa Hardin, our Town Clerk, and Kathy Smith, the Assistant Clerk. Ms. Hardin?
You're muted, Lisa.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. The repres ding map, we are keeping the same precincts. We're not changing anything. The 2020 census gave us a population figure of 8,460. We're within a 5% change. Our target is 2,820 per precinct. Right now, Precinct 1, we have 2,802. Precinct 2, 2,781. And Precinct 3, 2,700, I'm sorry, 871. So we're all within the range. John Barr from the Secretary of State's office agrees that no change is fine. We keep the three precincts. Everything is pretty much status quo from the last 10 years.
Any other comments?
Have you seen other redistricting maps? I'm shocked at how straight these lines are, Kathy.
I know.
Are they fine?
Of course, this allows swamp water in some of them.
Right, right.
Okay. Well, in that case, I'll take a motion to approve, assume we have to approve this. Is that correct?
We do. There's a letter that you have to sign, and I have to get it back to the Secretary of State's Office by October 30th.
Well, shouldn't we then wait until October 29th?
Sure.
Okay, I'll take a motion on the repres ding.
I move that we accept the 2020 repres ding plan for the Town of Millis as presented by the Town Clerk.
Second. Moved and seconded to accept the 2020 repres ding plan as proposed by the Town Clerk. I'll poll the Board. Mr. Jermaine, yes. Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
It is voted unanimously, so the pres ding can go forward as proposed.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. We now have the, let me just get what I want here. Okay, we have in front of us a ban, which is what, a bond?
Anticipation note.
Anticipation note. I can never remember that word. Apologize. And for that, I'm going to ask that Ms. Canal explain what's going on here. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jennifer Scannell, Treasurer Collector for the Town, and as the Chair pointed out, I'm here to ask for the Board's approval for a $470,000 bond anticipation note. It is related to the Clyde Brown School Project. The Cooperative Bank of Cape Cod was the highest bidder. The note is maturing August 19th, 2022, with a rate of 0.4%. And I'm asking the Board to, as you said, approve the note. As with previous authorizations, there is a one-page vote of the Select Board. That's enclosed in your package. Instead of reading that, I did include a suggested motion on the memo. I can take any questions that we have on the note?
I have only one. Would you explain what a bond anticipation note is for our audience, please?
Really just a fancy name for a short-term debt note. So usually, a bond anticipation note matures in a year or less versus going to bond a project, which is obviously, you know, 20 to 30 years. So it's just a short-term note.
We do these almost every year, but I think it's important.
We do. We do.
And the rest of the project is already bonded to term. This is just the last little bit of it.
So, correct. Today, to date, we've bonded $20 million. We've received $19,904,067 in grants. This is basically the last piece of the project until it's closed out, which I spoke with the project manager at the beginning of the month, and it was delayed a little bit, I think because of COVID, and then there was a landscaping issue that was delayed, which pushed the close-out lead a little bit further. But they're anticipating, hopefully, a final close-out with MSBA in the spring, which is why we're actually maturing this in August as opposed to a year. And we can hopefully, at that point, we'll know if we need to bond this or, based on what the project comes in at at that point, if we can just pay it off.
Excellent. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Any from the audience? In that case, I'll take a motion for this bond anticipation note in the amount of $470,000 to be paid off, I believe you said, in August at a rate of 0.4%.
I'll make a motion that we approve the vote prepared by Lock Lord Bond Council of the Town relating to the Town's bond anticipation note that sold October 19th, 2021.
Second.
So moved and seconded to approve the bond anticipation note for the Clyde Brown Project in the amount of $470,000 at a rate of 0.4% maturing on August 19th, 2022. I'll poll the Board. Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine, yes. And so approved. Thank you, Ms. Canal.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is a review and acceptance of the annual Green Communities' Report for Fiscal Year 21 by Mr. Robert Weiss, who deals with economic development, green communities, energy management, and I think there are about half a dozen other titles in there, but I won't press that. Mr. Weiss?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, right now, I'm coming, I'm here as the Energy Manager for the Town. What I'm asking is for the Board to approve and for the Chair to sign the Green Communities' Annual Report for 2021. I've included in your packet a table from that report, Table 2, which shows that for about 30 projects that we have implemented over the last six years, it shows a reduction of about 14.4% of the energy that we used back in 2015, which is the base year. As you're probably aware, we have replaced streetlights, high-pressure sodium streetlights with LEDs, interior lights at Town Hall and at the school buildings, which were fluorescent and incandescent. Those are also now LEDs. We've replaced a lot of the drives for our electric motors, everything from refrigerators to some of the DPW's sewer and water pumps with variable frequency drives, and we've done a lot of weatherization. So we've gotten about $750,000 worth of grants from the Department of Energy Resources, and we've had good results every year. And so we are asking tonight that the Board approve and for the Chair to sign the report.
I'll open the floor for comments from the Board. Questions?
Not necessarily in this one, but as another part of your work, you locked in an electric rate for us. Can you just send that rate, if you don't know what it is, off the top of your head?
I have some.
No, no, don't guess. It's going to be an even.
I think it is just around, no, I will not. I can send that out to you.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm sorry.
But otherwise, this is great. I think this is, yeah, thank you for the good work you've done on these projects with electric.
Yes, thank you.
I will also make a comment that Mr. Weiss is very much involved in the energy management with the committee, and they're looking into ways to further reduce costs for the Town, but also pass on new ideas for the residents. So that's coming along. Okay, I'll take a motion to sign this letter. Ms. Underhill, you want to give us, or Mr. Schultz, want to?
I only do the motions that are written out, so I'm going to leave. No.
Go ahead, Craig.
I don't know if this one's written out anywhere, but I'll move to accept the Energy Green Community, I just scrolled past to the next page.
Report? The Green Community Report as submitted.
Second.
So moved and seconded to accept the Green Communities' Annual Report as written. I'll poll the Board. Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine, yes. Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
It's so approved unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Weiss.
Thank you. Next year, I will remember to include a memo.
Yeah, if you could pass on that other information. I sort of remember it, but there's no way I was going to comment on that.
We're just locking, well, we're not locking rate at work because we've got another year and a half on it, and the rates are insane right now. So I could go up to merit.
But my, Mr. Chairman, when I looked at the rates, and I usually look at the rates every Monday, we get a report sent to us, and we signed the last rate in, Mike, if you remember, it was April of last year.
Yes.
And I look at what the rate is compared, in this report, compared to what the rate is today, and we're doing quite well.
Yeah.
Significantly below what it is today. And we're locked in till the end of '24, I believe.
It was a three-year deal?
Yeah.
I've been hearing that it's going to be just absolutely insane this winter for electric rates because of the natural gas price is going up, so the spot market's going to be crazy. So good job locking it.
Thank you. The timing was good.
Oh, yeah. That's, it all comes down to timing. So excellent. And I guess, Mr. Weiss, you're going to be on in a moment again because we're going to review and approve the Hazardous Mitigation Plan, and you're going to give us an update on the progress of that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And what I'm asking for is the Board's approval, really to proceed with the grants, it's a grant-funded update of the Hazard Mitigation Plan, which Mr. McKay, who's the head of the DPW, and I will be working on, Mr. McKay, I think, was very much involved in the current Hazard Mitigation Plan in 2018. And the current plan, well, every five years, we have to renew this plan, so it will be due for us to submit to the Federal Emergency Management Agency in November of 2023. And the reason the funding, the reason this process takes long is because the funding process begins now, the funding for the grant. And so we need the Select Board's approval for this in order for us to get the, to apply to the grant. This grant, what the Hazard Mitigation Plan does basically, basically is it analyzes the town's vulnerability to climate-based disasters. And it'll help us create strategies to prevent and to mitigate some of those disasters, you know, like the flooding that occurs around town. Mr. McKay could tell you about the project we have going on on Birch Street right now. But it'll help us address droughts, which could cause brush fires, heat islands, establishment of cooling centers if necessary. The grant is, we'll need about $20,000 for the plan to be finished. It's a, the grant we would get is a 75%, 25% split, so we would need $5,000 from the town. I think this was the same as we had the last time around. Is that right, Jim?
That's correct.
Yes. Right. And the great thing about this is, once we have the plan updated, even now, if we choose to go for some action grants to fund some projects such as what we're doing on Birch Street, this will help us get those grants.
Thank you. Mr. McKay, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
I think Bob gave a good synopsis of what we're looking to do. Luckily, both of us read an email about a month ago that brought this right to the forefront, and we're very timely on this, probably more ahead than most of the surrounding communities as the Foundation told us. So we're lucky that we did read that email quickly, and we will get this in on time. And it's a great service. The last time that we did file for it and we did ask for grants for flood mitigation, the town saved hundreds of thousands of dollars. And, you know, we look to do the same, you know, with this.
This is the kind of thing that is very important to the town, although people may not realize it. It's the fact that we can go after these grants and that you're keeping a timely look at them because those are the kinds of things that we've kept our town ahead of with respect to PFAS, the climate change grants, and several others that both of you have been involved in, and you in particular, Mr. McKay. But let's make no mistake, if we weren't keeping ahead, we'd be behind the eight ball, and we'd have to carry most of the costs ourselves. So this is quite important to the community. I don't want to minimize the importance. Granted, this one, if we approve it, it's gonna cost us $5,000, which in the scheme of things is a pitance compared to the downside risk that we would have had otherwise. So thank you both very much. I'll open it to questions from the Board? Comments?
Thank you for finding it, but I have no questions on it.
I have no questions either, but it certainly sounds like something we should definitely be moving forward with.
You can come in through here if you want.
I would agree. So I'll take a motion from the Board on the Millis Hazardous Migration Plan.
He's in there.
I move that we approve and authorize the town Energy Manager and the DPW Director to proceed with updating the town's hazardous mitigation plan and to seek a grant from the Federal Emergency Management Agency.
Careful, don't fall.
To move and seconded to approve the Hazardous Migration Mitigation Plan update for 2023 as proposed by Board members. I'll poll the Board. Mr. Jermaine, yes? Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz? Yes.
Don't ask.
So unanimous, and the grant proceeding to move ahead as you need to. Thank you both very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, and I think the next thing we're looking at is the Island Road opening request. And for that, I'm gonna look to both Mr. Jim Petro and Mr. McKay.
Mr. Jermaine?
I'm sorry?
This was scheduled for 8:00, and we're not at 8:00 yet. You might want to take something else first. I don't know, it's a hearing? I don't know if that matters, Mike?
It's not, it's not the type of hearing that, as long as the individuals are here that have requested the hearing, I think that's sufficient.
Okay, no problem. Carry on, then.
Mr. Chairman? I do have the Building Commissioner in my office, so I'm gonna just have him take over my identity for this piece of the meeting.
That's lucky.
But I will, I will be in the room, so.
Nobody could take over your identity.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I could start, and I think Mr. Jim Petro can. In front of you, you have an application from the, I believe it's the Cullens, if I hopefully am saying that correctly, that live at 59 Island Road. I received a street opening permit for 59 Island Road about 60 days ago from Eversource Gas Company, and that they were looking to install a gas service to 59 Island Road. And in that time, I rejected the application because the road is under a moratorium, a five-year moratorium. The road was paved in 2020. It was not just a milling and paving, I mean, that road, 800 feet, was reclaimed right down to the base source because of the idea of, you know, the high water table that is in that area and the deplorable way that road was in place. It's the Board's decision to put a five-year moratorium on a roadway that's been in place ever since I've been here. Once you get, you know, allow one permit to go through, I mean, the whole road could be cut up, you know, door to door to door. I did speak to the homeowners. They were, and I think I'll turn that over to the Building Commissioner. There was something about a permit that was given for plumbing permit for the connection on that, which that has nothing to do with the DPW. The only thing that I sign off on is the street opening permit. And I told the homeowners that they had the right to appeal it to the town administrator, and I gave him enough information. I did notify the gas company. At that time, it was Columbia Gas. Each year, I update what roads were paved, and they have it. You know, they have the, you know, the five or six roads that Millis is under the moratorium. You know, we did discuss in the past when it was Columbia Gas, Columbia Gas would allow to use flowable fill. Flowable fill is a slurry that turns into like a hard pan cement, not so much cement, but it's a hard-based component. And Eversource, just, they do not use it. They won't use it. They just compact and pave on top of the road. So that's the reason why we, you know, the DPW denied the permit because it is under a five-year moratorium. And like I said, it was, it's what, this will be its second year, so it has three more years under that moratorium. And you have the right to rule any way, you know, the Board feels.
Okay, Mr. Jim Petro, do you have any comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This came through the Building Department's attention back in September. There was an inspection request on, I guess, through the Plumbing and Gas Inspector. However, there was no permit that was issued. After that, Mr. Sullivan from Sullivan Plumbing and Heating came in, and the work was already done. He failed to obtain a gas permit to do the work. But he did come in, the plumbing and gas permit, did come in and obtained a plumbing and gas permit, September 7th. In conversations with him, knowing the situation about the gas, he did say that he conveyed to the homeowner that they could go propane by just putting two cylinders outside, and he was all set to do that. But the homeowner wanted to have natural gas. But there is an alternative heating source available. Mr. Sullivan from Sullivan Plumbing and Heating verified that. I did call him again just to make sure about a week and a half or two weeks ago. He did say, yes, that propane is available, put two tanks out there until the five-year moratorium is over. But the homeowner didn't, wasn't receptive to that. Also, in review of the file, we have a couple of outstanding building permits that were not completed. There was an addition building permit issued back in 2006, which we just have rough frame inspections, and it looks like that the, it's still outstanding. So I'll have to send them a letter and figure out that permit. It's been, it's been ongoing with no, they're not supposed to be occupying that space until they get a final inspection. So I'll, after this meeting, I'll send a letter out to that homeowner to see what the status is of that permit. Probably have to file a new permit because it's been expired. But as far as the gas is concerned, the person, the company who did the work, I did talk to them twice on two occasions, asked them for an alternative heating source. They verified that there was propane available by putting two tanks outside, bottles until, and then they could be, be their heating source until the five-year moratorium was over to cut the road.
Before I ask for comments, wasn't the permit ever requested for the natural gas prior to paving the road?
Not through my office. Like I said, the work was done without a permit. And then the, when this came to fruition, we were looking for a permit. There was no permit issued. And Mr. Sullivan from Sullivan Plumbing and Heating came in after, said he apologized that he didn't obtain a plumbing and gas permit to do the work. And he obtained it September 7th, 2021. So he obviously did the work, you know, first obtaining the permit, and then he came in after that. So I don't know any, of any requests through the gas company if there was a request to have gas brought to the house. That's not our jurisdiction. Our jurisdiction is to issue electrical plumbing, gas, and building permits based upon an application. So the application was filed, and we issued the permit based upon Mr. Sullivan's application and request.
But if I understand what you're saying, the permit came in subsequent to the paving of the road, correct?
When was the paving of the road?
2020.
Yeah, so, yeah, yes.
So?
The permit was obtained September 7th, 2021.
Okay. Do you have no prior understanding for a request for a permit?
We have no application, nope.
Okay.
The only outstanding permits we have is the addition back in 2006, which is still outstanding. And there was another one in 2000. Those are the only permits on file.
Okay. Before I proceed, Mr. Kuzinski, do you have any comments or anything?
No, Mr. Chairman. Essentially, my understanding of the situation is the same as what's been stated by Mr. McKay and Mr. Jim Petro.
Okay, should we hear from one of the Cullens or both of the Cullens?
Hi, yes. My name is Stacy Callen. I appreciate everybody's time. You know, we've been living here for 24 years, and I just want to say that, you know, we, when we made the decision, our heat is failing, we have oil heat, we're in a, we're an old house in a very new street where everybody has gas other than us. And so we made the decision to, after looking at everything, that gas was the best choice. You know, we get a reputable contractor, we, he told us he had the permit. Obviously, he did not. We went to Eversource, we paid the $1,000 deductible, you know, to make sure that we could hook up to the line. We are in here for $12,000 at this point. And, you know, Eversource has already marked out the street. The street is, you know, and I understand the moratorium, but we're in a very difficult situation. The way our house is laid out, it'd be very difficult to put propane tanks. I really don't even have anywhere to put it. You know, to put it on the side of our house, we'd be almost on our neighbor's property. So we're asking to have an exception to this rule. It's certainly not something that, you know, and I realize that this, if we had known this, we would not have done it. And in terms of the old permit, certainly we will look at that, and we will, you know, take the paperwork from our Building Inspector and take a look at that because I didn't, you know, again, I thought that was, that's a long time ago, and I thought that was taken care of, so I apologize for that. So that is basically where we are. We definitely are struggling with the propane because obviously, yes, it's possible, but I don't have anywhere to put a tank. It's not really, like I have this, you know, 50 feet on the side of my house to put a tank in. It's just not really there. So that's our position, that we're looking to get an exception on this rule.
Mr. Jim Petro? Or Mr. McKay? Can, do they have the ability to put a tank in?
Yes, in conversation with the contractor, Sullivan Plumbing and Heating, on two occasions, I specifically asked them if they had the space and the room to put two tanks in. He verified, yes, that they can put two tanks in, and it wouldn't be a problem.
Yeah, unfortunately, we have not had that conversation with him at all. We made it very clear that that was not something that we were able to do. So, I mean, again, not their fault, but, you know.
Now, assuming that they can, I, since I do have propane, I know that just the difference in the nozzle I understand it is pretty much the difference that you have to go for on heating or whatever else in terms of using propane versus natural gas. So if you had to switch from one to the other, you would have to change the orifice for the nozzle. But aside from that, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, and I'm not an expert on this, that could be done. Am I, or am I not correct, either Mr. McKay or Mr. Jim Petro? Are you that correct?
I had it done, if that helps. We were propane and went to natural gas.
Right, and I have been somewhat the reverse. They have also installed a furnace with the wrong nozzle, so I'm well aware of that as I got my second furnace. Okay, are there any other comments or questions from the Board members?
Yes. When somebody comes for this kind of a permit, so, so the permit was issued September 7th, 2021, after some work's been done, but let's forget about work that was done prior to that. When somebody goes for such a permit, is there any, does, are people aware that there is a moratorium on that road, and is that pointed out? Like how, how is everyone, how are people supposed to know that they, you know, I personally wouldn't have known about the moratorium until, you know, these types of meetings. So are people somehow notified when going for the permit that, hey, it sounds like you're doing this, and that's why you want the permit, but you really can't for five years?
So, Mr. Chair, I can answer that as best I can. The gas company, Columbia Gas, was notified in 2020, prior to this street opening permit, that that road was under a moratorium. So what the homeowner does, the homeowner goes to the gas company, they file for the permit through them. They send it in to us for approval, to the DPW for signature. Let's remember now, Columbia Gas was taken over by Eversource right at that time. Even though the same people may have been there, but computer systems were changed, from my understanding, and a lot of information was not moved from one to the other. But both Eversource and Columbia Gas and whoever at that time, at the beginning of each season, they request what roads are going to be paved in this upcoming season, and what was paved, and what comes off the list. And we do supply them with that, you know, yearly.
Do we do anything?
If I could just interject, we never had Columbia. We've always had Eversource. And Eversource took our $1,000 in about July or something. So, you know, and I'm not questioning, I'm just trying to understand what the difference is because they, you know, didn't.
Columbia, let me, Mr. Chair, Columbia Gas owned, they had Millis. And when they had the issues, Eversource took over Columbia Gas in 2020, 2021. I don't know the exact date, but Columbia Gas no longer exists. It's Eversource took over Columbia Gas.
Understood. Do, did the town in any way notify, or does the gas company notify people that the town, road is gonna be paved, that once it's paved? road is going to be paved, that once it's paved, you can't open the road for five years?
No, we don't, we've never done that in the past.
Just asking, okay. And does Eversource, is Eversource aware of that?
They're aware of the, uh, moratorium and they're aware, a lot of times they'll, they'll tell the homeowner when they look at the list, um, that they can't tie in because of the moratorium, uh, and, and get in touch with the town. The only thing, Mr. Chairman, I, I don't understand why the, the homeowner can't ask, um, Eversource for refund of the thousand dollars if they haven't done the work. I think that that's what they're, um, they haven't done any work. They haven't, they may have come out and painted the road and that's about all they've done. They haven't done, they haven't excavated anything and they have not done any work whatsoever. So I don't know why Eversource would be holding on to their down payment. But that's something, you know, the homeowner's going to have to take care of.
Yes. Other comments? Ms. Underhill, you, were you finished with yours?
Um, uh, sort of, yeah. I, I, I just could relate personally that when we purchased our house, there were two tanks outside. They really didn't take up that much room. Um, I think we had it for almost a good year. And then converting over to gas was, natural gas was pretty simple, aside from us paying our portion to the, um, gas company to install the line.
Okay, are there any other comments or questions from either of the board members?
I guess my thought is if propane, Mr. Chairman, if propane solves the problem, um, it, it, and it sounds like it would. I know I've got a propane tank in my yard. Um, but, um, and it was tricky decided, I agree with that. But we were able to obscure the view and, uh, make it as, as best we could. But getting a setback from the house and everything was a little tricky. But, um, it, it worked out nicely. Um, the, the nozzle change seems like a minor cost for inconvenience and it might do apply the two to three years or the three years, I guess it would be, that they needed to remove the open.
And I happen to think much the same because having been through it and living with propane myself right now, I do understand that there's differences and when the possible to open the road again. They can bring in the natural gas and change the orifice, the nozzles. Um, I'll open it to other questions from anyone else.
Mr. Chair, can I just bring one, uh, point up that, um, one, we'll see that Exchange Street was done five years ago and that was from, um, Island Road to, uh, I believe Union. And that's just what went through its five year. And people have been waiting and now they're just, we'll, we'll see that road. You know, it's been its five years and now people are going to start to hook up and it's, you know, a fairly good road. Right now, Ross is and it's going to get cut up, so.
Well, I guess from my perspective, I tend to go along with what Mr. Schultz was saying. That there is an option. As Mr. GM Petro indicated, there shouldn't be a problem putting in the tanks. And so it does look like they do have an alternative. So from my perspective, at any rate, I think that it's unfortunate the way things have transpired. But I think we would, I would recommend upholding the no cut into the road. So I'm going to ask the board, do we, um, Mr. Kozinski, do we close the hearing at this point?
Yes, you could just formally close the hearing.
Okay. Let me take a motion to close the hearing.
I'm going to be closed.
The hearing.
Second.
So move and seconded to close the hearing. I'll poll the board. Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine, yes. Okay. I think now we need to proceed to a motion as to whether we should allow the connection to a gas line, which means cutting into the new road or saying, no, we're not going to permit that. So I'll take a motion accordingly.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, I guess we're denying the request to open the road. Would that be the proper motion?
I think that's reasonable.
I'll make a motion to deny the, uh, request to open the road.
Second.
So move and seconded to deny the request to open the road. I'll poll the board. Mr. Jermaine, yes. Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Okay, that's a unanimous decision. I would hope that the Collins can retrieve some of the monies they paid to Eversource. But I hope they also understand the reason we've taken the vote and that we do believe they have an option. And I hope they'll work with the building, uh, director to, or commissioner to work on the options for propane that are available to them.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay. Now we're into what's called the open session agenda items. And the first item here is discussion of the fall-in-you-will-town-meeting warrant articles. So I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Kozinski, our town administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so, uh, as we discussed, Mr. Chairman, in putting together the agenda, uh, we wanted to put this item on there just to cover any, uh, any items of discussion for the board. Really, the main reason is, um, as I had contacted each member of the board at the last finance committee meeting, um, there was, uh, recommendations put forward by the town moderator as well as, uh, some members of the finance committee in regards to an aspect of Article Nine, uh, on the warrant. Um, and some minor language adjustments were made simply to clarify the intent uh, of the changes, uh, to the charter in Article Nine. Uh, you've received those. Um, those changes, uh, were presented to the finance committee. Uh, so they are, they're aware of those changes and they were aware of the changes when they took their recommendations. And I'm just asking this evening for the board to vote to formally approve those minor changes to Article Nine.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Schultz.
I'll make a motion to approve Article Nine with the minor changes that's indicated by Mr. Kozinski.
Second.
So move and seconded to have the board approve the minor changes to Article Nine, as has been discussed previously. I'll poll the board. Mr. Jermaine, yes. Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes. And just to be clear for anybody watching, the minor changes aren't what is reflected in Article Nine now as published.
Right, that Article Nine now reads in its entirety the way it should.
Thank you. Um, and I just wanted to give a brief update to the board as to the votes of, uh, recommendations from the finance committee. The finance committee did wrap up their votes on the recommendations for the warrant at their meeting last Wednesday. Um, I will report, um, that the finance committee recommended for approval at the town meeting all of the articles on the warrant, um, as approved by the select board with the one exception of, uh, Article Two, um, the, uh, HCA funds, um, one of the requests they've, uh, which was the, uh, item listed as school, uh, from the school for a townwide social worker for sixty thousand dollars. Uh, the finance committee, after, uh, uh, lengthy discussion, um, uh, in which there were representatives, in addition to myself, there were representatives of the school present. Uh, the finance committee, um, recommended against that last item and asked the parties to come back, um, uh, with some additional information perhaps for a proposal at the spring town meeting. Um, so that was the, the one, um, item that the finance committee, um, had a special caveat on their recommendation. Um, I also wanted to report that, uh, a number of planning meetings have been held with the town moderator, the board of health, uh, the town clerk's office, uh, election staff, school staff, uh, the police chief, um, folks from Millis Community Media, um, and, and several other town officials to prepare all the aspects, uh, and protocols for town meeting. Um, and, uh, I did speak with the moderator earlier today and we believe we have everything lined up, uh, for the town meeting. Uh, we will be putting the information on the town's website as well as sending out the, um, uh, town meeting postcard, uh, to the residents, uh, to give them, uh, framework and understanding on how the town meeting will be conducted, uh, as far as, uh, public safety protocols related to COVID. Um, and based on, on all of that work, I believe we're fully prepared for the town meeting on November eighth.
Mr. Chair?
So I'd be happy to hear any questions that the board have.
So I, Mr. Chair? I just wanted to, um, say that I did indeed post, we did put the information on the website today, actually. It's on the homepage of the website. Uh, we also put a note on Facebook that it is there to be looked at and sent it, uh, an email out to all the listserv. Um, it lists all of the protocol information, as Mike stated. It also has a copy of the actual warrant, the final warrant, um, on that page of the website for anyone who is interested.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions from the board?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Schultz.
I was not on the board when the, um, marijuana impact funds were discussed the first time around and we didn't discuss anything beyond just moving the list that existed last town meeting to this year. Um, I'd like to find out more about the townwide social worker and why that was included in last year's recommendations and find out the merits of it. I, I did not attend the finance committee meeting, but I'd like to hear if the school would be willing to comment and explain the request, um, so I get a better understanding of what it is. Or I can pursue it on my own, but I think it might be helpful for the committee to hear what their specifics behind it. So we can make an incision on recommendation or not on our end.
I happen to agree, if we could get that prior to this meeting, otherwise it has to be, it should be deferred perhaps. But it has.
I'm going to get in for our next scheduling, scheduled meeting to discuss it. I think we can make a recommendation.
Yeah, if we, I, I would hope we could and I would ask that they do so. I just don't know their ability to meet with us. But I would agree with you. There were some very legitimate questions that came up as I was listening to them. And I think we need to have an explanation for us to better understand it also.
And, and again, that's me. I think the one that I've heard that it does really have merit is I'm worried about adding any ongoing expenses to the town. I've always liked the capital approach for any of this money that's not recurring or recurring forever. So, um, that would be, uh, an interesting, uh, a discussion to have. So I'd like to hear what they have to say about it and if they can come in. Otherwise, it doesn't, you know, it's going to be a difficult one to recommend.
Okay, and, yes, I agree. And I will also say I heard comments about, well, if we're talking townwide, should it be the school? Should it be something that the town ante's up for if we really need it? I don't want to get into that right now. I'm just saying those were part of the arguments that were brought to the fore.
Yeah, and, and I think that, and the way I understood it last year before on the committee was it was proposed by the school but would not necessarily fund in supervision. But if that's not the case, then I was mistaken.
Right, yeah. So I think it's a worthwhile discussion. Uh, Mr. Kozinski or Mr. Marzo, could you see if we could get them, or somebody from the schools to meet with us at our next meeting?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Contact the superintendent tomorrow.
Appreciate it. Any other comments or questions from the board?
Um, I just had one question and we can get into it. When, when do we think we'll be voting our recommendations? Will that be next meeting? Is that our plan? You mean?
Typically, that is, that's the.
Where, where do we stand on these articles?
Right. I would say that we could vote some of them tonight. We're pretty close. Or we could wait and do the final vote next week. That's.
Yeah, I would just try to knock out the easiest.
I would, I would prefer to knock as many out tonight as we could because I also look at it that we ought to set ourselves up to become more familiar with some of these articles so that we can talk to them at town meeting. Um, and each of us will be assigned perhaps five of the articles or something like that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Underhill?
Um, I do know that we would be splitting these up so that we'd be prepared to engage in discussion about them if necessary. But I wa, I, I don't recall us putting forth recommendations in the same fashion that the finance committee does because all of them came from us to begin with, but I'm not, maybe I'm not remembering.
No, we typically do not per se recommend on an article. But we do, we've already put them forward. So there's an understanding that we felt that they were important enough that this is what the board has chosen to bring before the community.
Mr. Chairman, I, I do recall the select board making recommendations because there's been petitioned articles and other things on there and the pastor select board did not recommend it. And maybe it hasn't happened last year, but I do recall there were, and for the amounts and for the areas. So for instance, for instance, Article Two, even though we did put it forward with that sixty thousand townwide social worker, if, for instance, that falls off, we should vote it without that on there. So that's not when I vote tonight.
No, I.
But, but I do think it's incumbent, and I always remember the select board voting the hour prior to town meeting in the old days on what their recommendations were.
I was just going to say, that's typically what happens is we don't make the recommend, the final recommendation until just before town meeting at our meeting, prior to town meeting. But that doesn't mean we don't assign the articles for people, for board members to be prepared to discuss with the town meeting.
Well, I think it's important that we, um, take a vote on several of these so that we do have, we're on the record is what our position is. I mean, because, you know, you're right, we did put them on here. But for instance, um, you know, is, I mean, I'm going back to that social worker. You know, if, if that's something that we don't need, then we should recommend against it. Some of them, yeah, maybe we don't need to, but it seems easier and cleaner to recommend on or not, or give a consensus of the board on it, but.
Well, Ms. Underhill, what's your view on our recommendations? Clearly, uh, you know, if I go through these, we don't put articles like five, six, seven and so on on there if we don't agree essentially that those ought to be there. So I agree that they are tacit approvals, but do we want to have a physical vote on them? Um, I don't recall that we have done that, at least not in my tenure on the board. Mr. Kozinski or Mr. Marzo, do we, do you have any recollection of this?
Um, I would say that there's not a hard and fast rule. I think there have been occasions where the board has discussed particular articles that have been either complicated or somewhat problematic or the conditions around them have evolved in the weeks leading up to town meeting. Um, so, I mean, I might recommend to the board that perhaps, um, the board could, you know, they essentially recommend all the articles, uh, but highlight articles that require further discussion and deliberation before a, a final recommendation. So if there are a few articles of concern, maybe the board could just discuss those few articles and discuss whether or not it has the full recommendation of the board or, uh, they should be tweaked or a decision is made not to recommend them.
And, and Mr. Kozinski, I'm going back thinking just even to last town meeting before, um, before the election, before I was elected on the board, but I was on the finance committee. The open space, the board did take a vote on that because it was a three to two vote on the open space. Uh, so that's not to sit. And so I know it has been done and really there's only two that come to mind that would require that, in my opinion. Article Three, and not saying there's anything wrong with Article Three, but that's where we listed the entire shopping list of all fourteen items, not knowing what free cash was going to be. Now that we know what free cash is going to be, five hundred and thirty-two seems affordable. So therefore, that probably makes sense. And I, I'd like to talk about that more at some point too. But Article Two as well, especially with the townwide social worker, because those are just finalizing the list of items that were listed as a large list of expenditures. Um, going back to the rest of them, um, I'd like to discuss funding of, uh, Article Four in light of all the free cash that we have right now. That's one thought I had there. Can more free cash be devoted to Article Four to lower the, the fees for the water users? But I think after you get past that, so I, I take that back. I amend my comment. There are three articles, not two articles, that I would like to have a discussion about and vote on. But Articles Two, Three and Four, um, would be the only ones that I think really would warrant more than we've reviewed because it's on the warrant, you know?
Mr. Chair, I, I would just, by two senses, both, I completely agree with what Mike said and what Craig said. I have seen it both ways. I have actually written down the votes on occasion. In, in the past committee, the past few select boards, it has gone the other direction where they said it's a select board's warrant, you know, there's no need for us to vote unless it's something like Craig said that it's a bit controversial or you're changing it. So completely up to you guys.
Okay.
Well, that isn't as controversial as the amount of funding. I want to make sure we're on board with and clarified because it's, it's targeting the free cash and how we use it.
I have no problem, intrinsically with what Mr. Schultz is saying, if we limit it. Um, I think I'd probably look at it and say, okay, if we want to vote on Article Two in the, dealing with the. dealing with the issues as they were presented, again, I have no problem. I think we're all in agreement on wanting to get more information regarding the townwide social worker. Otherwise, we could vote on it, but I'd like that to be held in abeyance until we get more information. If that's acceptable, or do you want to vote on the article and just say?
No. As I said, I would like to hold voting on 2, 3, and 4 because those are the art, but I think we do need to have a vote on those. I wouldn't vote them tonight because I think it does really revolve around, putting the townwide social worker away. But I think it does revolve around free cash and how much free cash is used. With 2.1 million, I believe that's the number I saw in free cash, and a half million of that marijuana impact fees, the must fund, the OPEB, the stabilization, all those things we should do with it. That still leaves us with a good amount of money. And the question then becomes, do we want to take that money and try to put some of that, some more money, because we did not know we had this windfall of free cash towards the PFAS plant, so minimize the impact on the water ratepayers and everybody, because it wouldn't be any borrowing involved in that at all? Or do we want to, and do we prioritize that over another item? And I don't know. I'm just, I just think it's worth, we've got this money, two and a half, 2.1 million dollars of free cash. There's probably, you know, if you're done with everything here, setting aside several hundred thousand dollars that are open for discussion, you know, how do we use it? And I think that's a decision we make. So we don't just go approving this warrant and not set money aside for sidewalks in the spring, or the PFAS if we want to put it that direction. But I just find it's better to have that conversation and get it out. And maybe that's the sole point to the conversation, just.
I guess what I, I look at is, I wouldn't change Article 4 because even though we appropriate the money, we're not going to actually spend any of that money in the near future. It's going to take some time. And we have time in the spring to change how much we end up actually appropriating. Plus, there are other things going on with respect to PFAS, and we're trying to get other funding. So.
Well, we, we only do if we don't have any items that we're not going to fund on the other items.
Well, also, I think it's important that we keep in mind that, yes, we are very fortunate to have some windfall, but we also have things that have been deferred over the years, such as roads, which that windfall could help substantially with. I'm not convinced in my own mind, and this is my personal view, that we need to change Article 4 for the fall annual town meeting. All we're looking for in Article 4 is that authorization, but we're not actually appropriating any money at this point.
Mr. Chairman, let me try to explain it again. I'm saying, I agree with you. The roads, the sidewalks, we're putting money aside for PFAS in the spring is only allowable to do if we think about how we're spending right now. Yeah, I don't say we have to change the article, and I'm not even sure that it makes a difference. Looking over this list of items, you know, I, they've all, as you pointed out, they've all been deferred, they've all been discussed, the playground renovation, the excavator, that's about where the line was drawn, I think, between medium and high priority. The question is, and the question that needs to be had, is do we need to fund all the medium priority if our goal is to set aside more money for roads, for sidewalks, or PFAS, or anything in the spring beyond, until I see how much free cash we have and how we're using it. I can't have a good feeling about Article 3. It's just basically simple, isn't it?
Let me ask it this way. We think we have an idea of the free cash. I'm going to ask if our finance director is still with us, was, is Carol still here or not?
She actually, we're, sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry. She is not. She certainly can come back for the meeting next Monday if we want to talk about some of the specific budgetary aspects of free cash in Article 3.
I'd just like to see confirmation so that we know precisely what we've got, at least as much as we can at that time. I think Mr. Schultz's points are quite valid. I'm not in any way disagreeing. I just want to make sure that we don't get caught up in something that we didn't anticipate. That we know, I, I look at it this way. Article 4, we're going to move forward. How we use the money is critical with respect to understanding what our free cash and ultimate availability of reserve funds are. And I'd like to get a better understanding of that to the greatest degree possible prior to town meeting, if we can do so.
I have those answers, if I may.
Okay.
I did already ask the question of Carol. She said the general fund free cash is $2,072,363. And then there were enterprise funds free cash. So I'm gathering those are separate.
Those don't matter.
Those won't matter. Okay.
That has no effect on this.
Okay. So just over 2 million?
Yeah, and, and that I have, what I would need to see is the breakdown, how much needs to be set aside for the school bus lease, for those articles at the school, all of that. Just, just a breakdown. I just want to make sure that we are saving enough for the spring. In other words, do we draw a line at, you know, playground renovation and, and set aside the rest for, I, I'm not saying, it might be that we can afford it all, but we don't know what we can afford. I say that every year. We don't know what we can afford until we know what we can afford. So if we could see that breakdown, and I know Carol's done it. Unfortunately, I was not on the DOR list, so I didn't even know what free cash was. My email address was wrong. They unfortunately left the E off the end, which is a family curse. But, um, so when I saw the windfall that we did receive, and I just need to see a breakdown of how it all plays out. And that would make me feel comfortable voting 532,000 or, or not voting 532,000. And I'll agree with you, Pete, we don't have to say that the extras for PFAS, roads, or sidewalks, we can just say the extra is for the spring and have that discussion when it occurs. But those are the items that I'd like to make sure we're covering and just make sure we have enough funds from this free cash to do everything we need to do, including stabilization and OPEB.
Yeah, stable, I was just gonna say.
So, so I think there's enough, but, but I just want to propose, you know, make sure that this number is right when we propose it. We are the financial fiduciaries of the town. We have to make these decisions. We're the ones that set the budget and spend the money. I just want to make, I don't like to spend money later on, how much I have.
Right. I, the one I was going to suggest is because of what we've heard recently regarding OPEB, it's certainly something we have to consider.
No, we've got a, no problems funding that. Stabilization makes sense. All those things make sense.
Right, but let's.
We're gonna use three and a half million dollars of things that make sense.
Right. Let's, let's understand exactly where we stand. So, Mr. Gazinski, if you could ask Carol, review that with us at our next meeting, it would be much appreciated.
I will. And I will ask her to send out a, a full breakdown of the funds so you can review those prior to your meeting next Monday.
Yeah, and with the full breakdown, it could be a very quick meeting. I mean, we don't, we might not need her for more than 10 or 15 minutes if we get our rundown from right ahead of time.
Excellent.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, if I may. Kathy McInnis, 78 Island Road.
Just second Kathy.
Oh, I'm sorry, sir.
That's okay. Ms. Underhill, you had brought up a couple of other things before we go forward. I just want to make sure that the board members have had their say.
Yeah, no, I think my, my question was answered.
Okay. Then, Ms. McInnis, I'm sorry, I just wanted.
Oh, please, no, no, no. I'm gonna wear a couple of hats here. First, as the chair of the Enterprise Funds Advisory Committee, and I don't think it's very fair to the water users in particular to be going forward to a town meeting expecting a vote of over $5 million and not letting the water users know in advance what the maximum would be, that they would be paying for this. I'm not going to recommend to people I know that are on the water that they support this unless we know down to the penny what the maximum will be. And, Mr. Chair, you may remember that in the early spring, I asked the select board for an approximate amount that would be charged the homeowners, a maximum amount that would be charged the homeowners on their water bills if this was funded in full. And I think it's incumbent and expected from the select board to let the town know what your commitment is to the 2-point-something million that I heard the chair say at the FinCom last week, and correct me if I'm wrong, that you're leaning toward that, but you don't know. With all due respect, we've known that this override was coming to, in the spring, and nothing has been done by the select board or any administrator to clarify this and also the same issue. Well, no, I'll let you answer that before my two other questions, Mr. Chair.
Please keep going, Ms.
No, no, I found that when people ask questions, they don't all get answered. So may I ask their answer first?
I think we'll move on. What's the next question you have?
Okay, my next question is, I was always taught that the warrant is set by the select board. And in all my years of dealing with, you know, the, the Board of Selectmen, that the select board, and I learned from Mr. McCaffrey, the select board sets and votes the warrant. And the FinCom makes its recommendations. And I was just surprised that I saw the warrant was signed by three individuals of the select board, yet no votes were taken. And I wonder if that's a new way that the, the board is going now, or if you're, you know, gonna not even vote on a warrant that is your responsibility to put forward to the town.
Okay. And you had another question?
No, I'll let it go at that, Mr. Chair, for now.
Mr. Chairman?
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Schultz. I, I'd just like to comment on the last, oh, actually, I'd like to comment on both. I'll start with the last one, last comment. It's my understanding that in almost every year, the select board signs the warrant before they take their votes on it, but they do take votes on it. That's what I've always believed and always seen. So the warrant is sometimes signed early because you have signing deadlines, you have to get things out in the press. And the signing is to vote to approve the warrant, but then there are times that things do change on it. And, and we, Article 3 and Article 4 and Article, well, Article 3 and Article 2 are the ones that have dollars associated with it. We did vote to add everything else. We did vote to add everything else because I think we agreed on it. But Articles 2 and 3 might need some fine tuning on the numbers, and that's why I was pushing for a vote on those two articles specifically, in case there's a change.
I might notice also, Mr. Schultz, that we have voted on the other articles over the period of the last several weeks.
So we voted to put them on the warrant. And, and we didn't vote on the final amounts on it. Up until last week, we thought Article 3, you know, we were hoping to get down to the assessor's office or something. We didn't know how far down we'd be able to go into it, because I'm the one that pushed to put everything on it, on the off chance we had more money. Well, now the off chance is a reality, so let's, you know, decide on where we probably, could have just as easily gone the other direction if we didn't have enough money.
Right.
And it'd be voting, because we can't propose 532,000 unless we had 532,000, which we do. But, so I think that it's fair to say that we should vote all these, but I think there is a difference between signing it to put it out and then voting it shortly thereafter. My complaint had always been the select board voted it at town meeting night, one hour before the meeting. I think next week is fine. I think.
Can't say I recall that, with all due respect, Mr. Chair.
Maybe not the year you were on it, but I'm going back a few years prior to Steve, when I was FinCom chair. I know it was voted, but right prior to the meeting. And the first part, I would like to, I, I do agree with Kathy. We have to have a plan for funding Article 4 to present. You can't, or, or an impact. If we're gonna say the impact on the water users is five points, potentially 5.6 million dollars, we better be ready to say that the average home will see an X increase of X dollars per, per year on the bill. If we know that we're gonna take 2.4 million dollars of funds in hand and apply it to that, we can say the amount will be Y. You know, it's, it's, it's simple math, but I think we should be able to give that answer. I can't in good conscience easily ask people to vote 5.6 million dollars for a water treatment plant when in fact it might only be, you know, 3.2 million, and we don't know what the cost of it's going to be, and it could be lower. I'd like to give them a range of cost estimates on it and say what we know, which right now I believe we know that we've got the 2.4. It's our intention to put towards this. And then we can give a rate based on that when we do it.
My concern is, Mr. Gazinski, do we actually have the 2.4 in hand, or are we expecting it?
We're expecting it. This is what the, the federal government has notified us through the state, that the 2.4 million is what's been allocated to the town halls.
So we have an allocation letter for it.
That's right.
But, okay. And then, but still, we can do the math and say if, without the allocation, 5.6 million equals this much per household.
Yeah, we, we understand. And that's, I don't have a basic problem with that, but I do think we need to get to a bottom of it, and we need to make sure it's understood. We have to vote for the entire 5.6 with the understanding, if these come in, here's what our plan is for the allocation of these funds to.
And I'm not saying vote for the 5.6. I'm saying vote for X hundred per, yeah, I'm saying you gotta break that down to what it's gonna cost me over the next 30 years, 20 years, or whatever it's gonna be. I don't think it's fair to say 5.6. Trust us, it's going to be a number that will let you know. I think it needs to be 5.6, and that equals, I don't even want to say a number and speculate, but X dollars per year per household. If we get the, on water, if we get the 2.4 million dollar grant, or rather, when the 2.4 million dollar grant is awarded, that would drop the price to something lower. I just find anytime you're asking people to vote a tax increase or a bill increase, it's a good idea to let them know what it is.
Well, to the greatest extent possible, we should, but we also have to take into account that the town has to make some decisions as to, is it just water and sewer? Who's gonna pay for it? Or is the town in general that'll pay for it? If it's the town in general, what do you say to the people who have wells, who can't get on the town's water and sewer system? So we have a number of other discussions that we're going to have to take place.
If it's, if it's the town in general, Mr. Chairman, that needs to be an override, and that's not on the warrant, and that can't happen. We've made a tacit decision that it's not the town in general that's paying for this. It's going to have to be sewer users mitigated by whatever grants come in. Otherwise, we have to go for an override on it.
Right. But it's also possible that we would decide later on, maybe we ought to change the way we do it, although we need something to move forward pretty quickly because of the commitments that we have to make.
But it seems like it should be a pretty simple process mechanically to have 5.6 million amortized out over the life of the loan, and then that costs spread over the number of homes.
And how many?
On a home rate line basis.
Yeah, I mean, all we can do is give the average. We can't do much more, but we can.
Right, but, but that at least gives a number. And then if we take that same 5.6 and subtract the 2.4 and spread that the same way, we can say the range is between X and Y, depending on funding, you know, other funding.
So should, should we be able to get those numbers prior to town meeting? Is that what we're saying?
I think we absolutely could. I mean, I could figure it out if I knew bond borrowing rates and if I knew the number of homes on.
But we have to, you know, we have to get the total number of water users regardless.
Yeah.
And we're gonna have to decide how to spread that, but the numbers are pretty simple if you get that.
Yeah.
You can pull it together quite quickly. It's, it's very basic math, as Craig says. So that's not a particularly difficult thing. We have had problems in certain aspects. Hi, Mr. McKay.
We can get those numbers, Mr. Chair. We could definitely get those numbers by your next meeting.
You can.
Yes.
I appreciate that.
Mr. Chair, I thought of, oh, I'm sorry, Ms.
No, go ahead. You're good.
You know, I, I'm just hearing now from Mr. Schultz that this cannot be a townwide override now, and I'm just wondering why for the last several occasions that this has been discussed. I've heard the comments from the select board members that they were still looking into the option perhaps of a, a townwide payment of this. And I just want to make sure that the select board knows what ramifications will come if this is not voted, because it is a townwide problem. I don't have kids in the school, but I'm paying for the school. So just because you're not using public water, it's coming to you one way or another. So I'm, I'm truly right now disappointed for everyone, the, the thousands of water users that are now going to be burdened by this, when we had hoped that the select board would see the wisdom of make, seeing that this was a, a townwide issue, and the town, the town should come together on this. Thank you.
Having heard that, you have to understand also that there's been no secret that if we applied it strictly to the water fund, that it would come out of that enterprise fund, and that's the way this was written. There's nothing unique about the way it was written in terms.
I'm sorry, as the chair of the enterprise funds, Mr. Germaine. I'm sorry, as the Chair of the Enterprise Funds, Mr. Germaine, I understood that there was always the chance that this was going to be considered as a townwide payment. And, you know, I had all three of you sitting on the Enterprise Funds with me, and not one of you said, all of you agreed, as a matter of fact, with sympathy, that it should be borne by the entire town. So now the way the language was written by someone unbeknownst to people that aren't legalese, or as finessed in what Craig Schultz just said, I'm not gonna support this the way it is now. I'm truly.
And I'd say the 2.4 million dollars of grant money is money that I'd put towards, and that is townwide money. I'd also try to add more money as available to it, but the way it is written, it is not written as a two-and-a-half override. That's not the way this is structured.
But I haven't, you know.
As I said, it's not two-and-a-half.
The water users, Mr. Schultz, you know, through the Chair, have not heard that as a vote yet. And here we are, 10 minutes almost before a town meeting, and funding sources are still not available because of the concern that maybe sidewalks might be needed over PFAS money. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll wait until, I guess, next week to finalize our decisions on these articles. We'll get the clarification on the amounts of money that are available for free cash, and we'll get clarification on potential billings for water users as per Article IV. Is there anything else that either of you can think of that we want to go into in any more depth on the rest of this warrant? Okay. Hearing nothing, I will then say, let's move on, and the next item is the letter from the Norfolk County Registry of Deeds. Mr. Kaczynski and I have had some discussions in this area, and I'm gonna bring you up to date on the latest discussion. As you know, we received another communique from the Norfolk County of Deeds, Mr. O'Donnell. And apparently, the county commissioners are basically saying that they want to take over responsibility for doing all IT for the registry. And as Mr. O'Donnell explained to me today, the registry has approximately 130 PCs and people for where they deal with the collections and distributions of the funds that they receive, and the commissioners have approximately 20 PCs. They apparently got somebody in who is familiar with the schools to do some kind of analysis. It's not clear what the IT background of the individual is, and they're still coming out that they want to have control over the IT for the registry. I guess Mr. O'Donnell has decided that he is filing some kind of complaint, and they're going to be discussing this in greater detail. The problem that they're facing is that he is apparently now without the support he needs for his IT department, so there could be some concerns coming up in the future. They don't know quite how they're gonna manage their cybersecurity, firewalls, and the general support on a daily basis that they need for the users within the registry. And that's as far as we went today. I at least got his views on it. He was very much aware of the letter that we sent, appreciative of it, and we'll just have to keep an eye on what happens. Do either of you have any questions in that regard? Mr. Kaczynski, do you have any comments?
No, Mr. Chairman, I think you covered the topic quite well. Certainly, there's a lot of questions as to why the commissioners have chosen not to continue with a IT director with such a large IT presence, but I think it's something that we should keep following up with.
Okay. Mr. Schultz, I think you are representing us more or less for the registry.
Yeah. I haven't had any conversations with them, but I do support, I mean, I fully support the technology position.
Yes.
It's what I used to do, it's what you do, it's critical.
He and I talked, and I mentioned to him your substantial background in this area, so I know at some point he'd be very interested in talking with you too. So I went over a lot of technical details that were of interest to him.
Good, I will follow.
That would be great. Okay. Hearing, are there any other questions from board members or the community? Hearing none, I think we need to then discuss approval of the town's HVAC services contract with Renad, so I'll pass that off to Mr. Kaczynski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as the Board is aware, we did go through the process of searching and procuring a heating, ventilation, and air conditioning company for the town. I wanna thank Karen for all her hard work on this. She took the lead on this project and coordinated with Bob and a number of other town employees and officials. And we do have some, I think, a great company coming forward that has, it was the sole bidder on the project. We did advertise it far and wide, but appears these folks, a lot of these folks are quite busy. And Renad has a great reputation, and we have checked out their references, they've come back very strong. And as you can see, the information related to the proposals is in your packet. And I am recommending that the Board authorize the signing of the contract with Renad for our HVAC services. And, Mr. Chairman, I just wanna let Karen talk for a minute about the background work that she did on this, and that we're ready to move forward with them.
So, Mr. Chair, I guess Mr. Kaczynski said most of it. Putting together the bid was quite an interesting process, because we had not gone out to bid specifically for this in quite a while, and the town has changed considerably. We now have six buildings that we need to have maintenance for. It's some brand-new systems, and including our very, very antiquated system here at Town Hall, so we really needed someone who knew what they were doing. I'm very happy with them. We had many discussions with them already, and they certainly have the qualifications to come and do the work for us. And I will say, we already had a small issue over at the police station that we need to call them for even prior to this, and the chief was over the moon about the response that he had from them, and he was thrilled. So I think they're gonna do a great job for us, and I'm very excited.
Yeah, if I could comment, that was precisely what I was gonna say, is for the first time the chief got a response and got a problem fixed, it's been outstanding for years.
Exactly.
He is just very, very happy with the response he got. Well, I'll take, any questions or comments from the board members?
Actually, a general question, if I may. So the rule is, this rule isn't the right word I wanna use, but I'll just use it. So the rule is typically to get three bids for something, correct?
In actuality, just to give a little background on that, there are different levels of procurement.
Okay.
If the procurement is less than $50,000, you can simply go out and solicit three bids. If it's over $50,000, well, it depends on the type of bid it is, or the type of project. But in this case, the level of contract it was required us to actually advertise through the central register, through the state, as well as advertise in the newspaper and advertise on the town website. So we did a broad advertisement, and with that, there's no requirement that we receive a certain number of applicants, because we put it out there for everyone to bid on.
Okay, I see.
So the fact that we only received one, although we would like to receive more, does not preclude us from moving forward, just because only one company decided to submit.
And just to note, I think we're very, sorry, I was gonna say, we're very lucky to have even gotten them, as the market is crazy right now. I was afraid it was gonna come in extremely high. It didn't, they're not that far off from what we're currently paying, so I think we really lucked out, so crossing our fingers, this goes very well.
I would agree, that I think we're gonna see a much improved maintenance program with this new company, so I'm excited about them coming on board and really helping us improve our systems.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments from the community or otherwise? Then I'll entertain a motion for signing this contract.
Mr. Chairman, I was just asked if the Board could vote to approve the contract and authorize myself to sign it on behalf of the Board.
Okay, I'll take a motion on that. Well, I can make it up.
No, you can. Okay. I move that we approve the contract with Renad HVAC and Controls Incorporated for a total amount of $30,645, and to authorize the town administrator to sign the contract.
And it's for a three-year contract. Right, and that's per year for a three-year contract.
Okay.
Okay, I'll poll the Board.
Did someone second?
Oh, second. Sorry.
Thanks, Aaron.
Sure.
Good catch. Okay.
Every second's cute.
I'll poll the Board. Mr. Germaine, yes? Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Okay, so you may move forward with this, Mr. Kaczynski, and Ms. DiMarzo, thank you very much for all your efforts to get to this point. My pleasure.
You're welcome.
Okay. The next item is the review of any liaison updates from the committees that we attend. Does anyone have anything? Ms. Underhill?
Yes, I attended the PBC meeting. The meet of that was really an update on the DPW project, which is going well. It sounds like they're doing a great job. I'm excited to see it at some point. So that was the bulk of it.
Mr. Schultz?
Aaron went to my meeting. I had a work commitment.
That's fine, that's fine. I attended the energy meeting, Energy Committee meeting. As usual, they're looking at ways that they, the town can further reduce its carbon footprint and do things in an energy-efficient manner, but they're also looking at ways to help the community to better, make better use of what they've got in their homes, and they hope to be able to publish some kind of strategic plan and helpful advice over the next several months, so that's coming along. Otherwise, I think I've reported on everything else that I was involved in one way or another. I will mention that the DPW building is coming along very well. It's in good shape for occupancy. I think around mid-November is when they're going to hopefully turn it over, but that's the latest I've heard. I don't know what's actually gonna come out as a date. With that, we have some draft minutes that we need to look at and decide if we want to approve. Oh, wait a second, stormwater utility bill, I apologize.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your packet, in the Board's packet, you'll see the stormwater utility commitment to the collector for fiscal year 2022 in the amount of $671,352. I request that the Board vote to approve the commitment to the collector for that amount.
Okay. Mr. Kaczynski, do you have anything to tell us how we arrived at that specific number?
Mr. Chairman, this is based on the original cap at the $600,000 amount on the charges, but this accounts for new growth and new construction, so that accounts for the increase.
Okay. Any comments or questions from the Board members? Hearing none, are there any comments or questions from the general public? Hearing none, I will take a motion from the Board for approval of this annual commitment.
Take a motion that we approve the annual commitment, the scroll I just stopped, for stormwater of $671,352.
Second.
For fiscal year '22.
Okay, it's moved and seconded to approve the stormwater commitment fiscal year 2022 in the amount of $671,352. I'll poll the Board. Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Germaine, yes? Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Approved unanimously. I think we need to go by and sign this at the earliest convenience. Okay, we're now to the point where we're looking at the draft minutes. Have each of you had a chance or opportunity to review these minutes?
Yes.
Any comments or questions?
No.
Okay, I'll take a motion to approve the draft minutes.
I move that we approve the draft minutes for September 27th, 2021.
Second. I'll say, it's moved and seconded to approve the draft minutes for September 27th, 2021. I'll poll the Board. Ms. Under, excuse me, Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Germaine, yes. Okay, I think that gets us pretty close to this end of the portion. We are now going to move to adjourn to executive session. We do have a number of items which I just don't have in front of me. Mr. Kaczynski, perhaps you can illuminate first?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, so at this time, I request that the Board enter into executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for union and non-union personnel, namely the police chief and the Massachusetts Coalition of Police Local 171 and Milis Police Association dispatchers, and to discuss strategy with respect to litigation for the acquiesce film-forming foam litigation.
Having heard that, we will now poll, I'll poll the Board to move into executive session.
Sorry, just a note, Mr. Chair, I did not send the link for executive session, so as soon as we close this meeting, you can look in your email, and I'll be sending the link in 20 seconds.
Okay, thank you. Now, before you close that, does everyone here have an email address that's going to get that link?
I'm gonna send it to your work email address.
That's fine.
Everyone can access it? Okay, that's the plan.
I have a town email address.
Town. Town. It's getting late.
I'm not logging into work, because once I do that.
Don't log into work. Don't do that.
Okay. Having said that, I'm now gonna poll the Board. We're gonna return to the open meeting at the end of the executive session and then close the open meeting. So I'll poll the Board. Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Germaine, yes. I'll see you in a few minutes in executive session. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.